See a lot of familiar faces there. All right, why don't we get started? So, good afternoon. This is our quarterly town hall meeting with St. Vincent de Paul, Georgia, connecting all of our conferences. My name's Jerry Veltrey. In the room with me, I have our new housing director, Marielle Sibley, as well as our CFO, Cheryl King, and we will, we will spend the next hour or so going through a number of different topics. I'd ask that you stay on mute while we go through the topics and either put the questions in the chatroom, or wait till the end when we have the open forum, when you can ask questions. So, again, I appreciate you spending your time to come in and with us. We still got more people coming in. So, Jennifer, I gotta ask you, are you seeing this coming through so you can start admitting people while I start up the presentation?
I sure am.
Awesome. Alright, so let me give this a shot. I'm gonna start the presentation, and we can get, we can commence. So, let's see. Share. Okay, well, thank you so much for coming. As I said, this is our quarterly town hall. We've been conducting this ever since the onset of COVID. I think people have found this of value, because what we try to do is give you a few topics, talk a little bit about what's going on at the council, what's going on at the conference, what's going on with some of our partners. So, and again, my name's Jerry Veltrey. The other thing I just wanted to mention, this is a special month. This is Feast Day month for two of our principal founders, Blessed Frederick Ozenom, whose feast day is on September 9th, and then St. Vincent de Paul, for which the society is named after and is our, our patron. At the end of the month will be his feast day, so I hope you guys all spend a little time, you know, learning a little bit about St. Vincent de Paul and Frederick Ozenom, and understanding the roots of our society and our founding that still we, we still utilize today and we still follow. As always, with our meetings, we start with a prayer. So, the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. St. Vincent de Paul, your love of Christ and of the poor served as an inspiration to Blessed Frederick Ozenom and the founders of the society that bears your name. We humbly ask for your intercession, that the Holy Spirit will give us the grace to put into practice your virtues in our daily life. May we approach problems with simplicity, with our intention to focus on God. May we follow Jesus' example of humility by being meek and humble of heart. May we practice mortification to die to our desires so that we may better serve others. May we practice gentleness, so we may be warm and inviting to all those we encounter. May we have zeal in our ministry to serve God's people, even as we balance our other responsibilities. We ask you to take this prayer to our Lord Jesus Christ, and if it is, if it is in the Father's holy will, our petition be granted. Amen. So, as I explained, we have a full agenda today. The expectation is we're gonna cover it within 60 minutes and allow for some time afterwards for questions. We do invite you, we do encourage you to have questions for us as we come together virtually around the society. So, so now I'd like to turn it over to Pat McNulty, our CEO. Pat, love to hear your words of wisdom.
Alright, thank you, Jerry. I'm not, not sure about the wisdom part of that, but thank you for, for organizing this effort, and I've always enjoyed this, this opportunity to dialogue. Jerry and I tried to, amongst others here, try to spend time as much as we can with conferences in the districts, but this is a, this is a chance to formally do that where the, some of the places that we haven't been to recently or in between those intervals. This is a good opportunity to exchange, as Jerry said. Good chance for us to let you know about a few things that are going on, but more importantly, to hear from you all, because quite frankly, that's where, as I've always said, that's where the service is delivered, and we thank you all for your ongoing efforts and all that you do for us. And thank you for taking the time out of your schedule today to, to participate and to to be a part of this. I just have two or three very quick things and turn the bulk of the meeting back over to Jerry, but first off, want to thank everybody that's on the call that had the opportunity to attend our Morning of Hope. It's approximately two and a half weeks ago now, and it's just a great opportunity to, to get together. It's been a couple of long years without being able to assemble the entire group, and as all of you know that are Vincentians, and I know most of the people on the call are, fellowship is a big part of who we are and what we do. One of the founding values of the organization, and so it was a great opportunity to do that. I think it was also a great opportunity for us to talk about our three key pillars, hunger, housing, and health, and also a good opportunity to share that with the community. If you haven't seen, we, we, I think we've pushed it out in a few different areas, but we certainly can. Again, we've gotten some really nice press about the event, which is, which is great, because it helps us, you know, share our message with the wider community about what we're doing and, and the value of the services that we provide to people, which hopefully is, you know, helps build momentum in terms of being able to generate. I hate to be so revenue-focused, but the revenue helps us provide aid and assistance and, and continue to build out our pharmacy and to continue to accelerate and increase our volume with our food pantry and those kinds of things. So, it hopefully will continue to do that. And, and the great news is we had phenomenal attendance, and we've had a good, good participation from a donation standpoint, so it's, it's been very positive, and I hope that we can continue that momentum into the year end and into the, to the new year. And speaking of new year, I want to just share a couple of other things. Jerry, I think for the people that were on, at least early, introduced Marielle, who is sitting to Jerry's right and to the screen left. So, Marielle Sibley recently joined us actually this week, and we're really excited about what she brings to the organization. As you may recall, approximately a year and a half ago, we, we renewed, refreshed our strategic plan, and a big part of that strategic plan was for us to increase our efforts in the housing arena. And Marielle is, is an incredible asset that we've been able to add, to help guide us in those efforts to to increase our capabilities in that area, and, and just her knowledge and, and skills. I won't, I won't, I won't go through her complete resume, but she, to summarize, she brings great expertise in the area of housing, overall human services, and has a good legal background, which doesn't hurt. So, we're really excited about what she brings to the equation. And so, before I turn it back over to Jerry, I also wanted to let people know pretty important, I think, to the organization, that I have actually decided to retire from my position with St. Vincent de Paul at the beginning of early next year, so effective January 2nd. And my wife and I will be relocating from the Atlanta area. I want to assure you, though, that the board has a, has an excellent transition plan in the, in the works. And I think we're just days away, literally, from being able to announce that transition plan, and I think you all it, be excited about the, the, the new leader that looks to be in the works, and quite frankly, I think, as I've said to some people here internally, it will be an upgrade for the organization. So, while I've enjoyed it, and this is a very difficult decision, primarily driven for personal reasons, we, we look forward to taking the organization to new heights. I'm going to stay on for an extended transition period on an as-needed basis beyond January, if necessary, and will assist if the board so chooses for me to, to be a part of the board. I will, I will stay on. I think back to two, two and a half years ago, when I first started talking about the opportunity and where the organization was and where we are today. I think we've made some incredible strides and have put some great pieces in place. Feel really good about the leaders that we have amongst us. Feel very good about the, the, the relationship that Jerry and his team have with the conferences and, and know that we're in a, a much better place than we were. So, with that, Jerry, I'm gonna kick it back over to you, and I would definitely be on at the end for questions as they, as they come up.
Okay, Pat, well, thank you very much, and, and we know that you're not gonna go too far away from home, home being the society. So, alright, let's go to next slide. Alright, so now we're turning it over to Cheryl King. As you know, this is September, not only the Feast Day, but it's also, you know, the end of the fiscal year, right, Cheryl?
Absolutely.
So.
Going fast and ready or not, here we go.
Alright.
So, I don't think I'm on the screen.
I, I moved you over. I moved it over so that you are.
I am. Okay.
Yeah, so there you are.
Alright, well, for those-
You are, but everybody sees the actual PowerPoint.
Excuse me. Hey, Jerry, I'm only seeing the title page. It doesn't seem-
Yeah, we haven't advanced yet.
Okay.
Okay. So, for those of you that I haven't met yet, I am Cheryl King. I'm the CFO for, for St. Vincent de Paul, and I oversee all of the, the full organization's finances, including everything that, that you report into us from your conferences every month. We have a, an accounting department team here that works on accounting for everything, making sure that we produce accurate, timely financial statements. We're also responsible for the council's budget, and we're, we're in the process of finalizing our budget for fiscal '23. Currently, we're looking at some cash flow issues, and we also have the annual audit that we will be undertaking with our outside accounting firm, Car Rigs and Ingram. They're the same firm we've had in the past, but they were under a different name called Brooks McGinnis, but they're now merged with Car Rigs. It's a bigger firm. We'll have the same team members on the audit, providing some great continuity, but they do have a, a new name. So, let's move to the next slide.
There we go.
Okay. So, I think a lot of you are aware of-
We're still not seeing the next slide. Just see the cover slide with the big logo.
I'm surprised.
The original first slide of the presentation.
Yeah, the first slide with the-
We haven't seen anything in advance.
Alright, so let me do this. Let me stop sharing and then reshare, okay? Alright. Stop share, let me share. It is. Let me go up to it.
I can't see Cheryl either, but I, maybe we're not supposed to see her. I don't know.
What do you see now?
Conference annual reports.
Yeah, now it's advanced. Thank you.
Alright, actually, the camera's pointing over there. Do you want me to change the camera?
Well, they just said-
They couldn't see you because, let me just switch it then. Alright.
We can see her now.
Okay, see all three of you now. All three of us. Okay, there we go.
There we go.
Alrighty, so, so, moving, moving on to the conference annual reports. These are due to the council's office by October 30th. And this is a form that you will utilize to report all of your, your numbers and your data for the full fiscal year ending September 30th. It's prepared by the conference treasurer and the secretary, approved by president, and then submitted to our office by the 30th. It's very important that we get your, your numbers served, your in-kind donations, your number of volunteer hours, the miles driven, and the membership numbers included in the report. We compile all of this data across all of St. Vincent, Georgia, DePaul, Georgia, and we submit it to national. So, it's, it's very important that these numbers get, get submitted properly and accurately. Okay? We also require that each conference have an internal audit that would be conducted during, during the course of the, of the year. It's specified in the handbook. The bylaws require it. You can see the the actual requirement here on the slide. So, it's designated that you have two independent parties participate in performing a review of what's happened within the financial aspects of the conference. It's all detailed out in the handbook. There is a worksheet in the appendix, Appendix G has this specific requirements that you look, that are being handled in the audit, and then Appendix H will be your verification form that gets signed and submitted. So, all of these items will go to the district treasurer first and be submitted by the 20th, and then the district treasurer will submit them to the conference support center by September 20th. And we also share these internal audit reports with the external auditors. So, it's an important financial process. Okay? Another requirement that's specified again in the, in the handbook is a listing of your conference income and dispersment guidelines. So, written, your written procedures that you implement and follow for your income, all receipts coming in, and then written procedures for how you designate dispersments or approve dispersments. So, we request that you submit those to our office again by September 20th. Council-wide audit. I alluded to this earlier. We will have Car Rigs as our audit firm conducting the audit across the entire organization. They will audit selected conferences, certain thrift stores, a lot of, a lot of what we do here at the council and our special projects. The conferences that get, get, get selected, they will do a random selection of conferences for which they will do more detailed testing. That will require that you submit documentation to support the transactions that they're gonna select. And I don't know what they are yet. They haven't actually made their selections of conferences yet. I expect that any day now, and I will get it communicated to you. And then they will go into CMS, and they will start to make their individual selections for you to provide documentation to us to support those selections. So, we, we look forward to you participating with us in this very important process. It will allow us to have a set of audited financial statements that will be shared on our website and available to donors or grantors, others, people that may be interested in looking at our financial position. So, it's a very, very critical process that we, we go through. See, that's the last slide.
Awesome. So, Cheryl, thank you so much, and you're right. I mean, in order to keep our good standing as a 501(c)(3), in order to be ready, we have to do these types of things, and so appreciate that you and all of your staff does, and also what goes on at the conference. It's very important for you to fill out the CMS case record forms to close them, so that we have an accurate depiction of the assistance that we provide. And then, as you know, we put in the right type of mechanisms in CMS so that we can carry less and less actual paper. I had a conference just come and drop off three big boxes of paper saying, "I don't know what to do with them because we don't have room for it." So, it's good if we can digitize as much as possible. So, thank you so much, Cheryl, for reviewing this for a year-end closeout. Next, we want to talk about one of our partners, and I know that I get a lot of calls regarding situations which have, which basically, the foundation of which is people are fleeing domestic violence. And I know that we have a lot of incentives out there that are really trying to help the folks. This is such a specialized skill. There is an organization out there that we partner with, Paul House of Globalization, and so pleased to have Vivian Shakoo, who's the executive director of this statewide organization, and talk to us a little bit about what domestic violence is and how we can help those families in need. So, Vivian, you there?
I'm here. I'm here, Jerry.
Awesome. So, it's over to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I know I've met some of you, but I've not met a lot of you. But thank you so much, Jerry, for having me today. Welcome to House of Global. We are in downtown Atlanta, midtown Atlanta. That's where our office is, very close to the mall, at Lenox Center. So, House of Globalization, our website is right there. You can click on the website to learn more about the website. We're also doing business as Restoring Hope, Inc. So, it's a long story why the, the name is House of Globalization, but that is on another presentation, not today. So, but the umbrella name is House Restoring Hope, Inc. Next slide. So, as Jerry introduced me, my name is Vivian Shakoo. I'm the executive director for House of Globalization. We have been in business since 2017 in the Atlanta area, like I stated, and just doing the awesome job that we do. Next slide. So, domestic violence. Let me see if I can take this out. I'm going to use my slide here, Jerry, because I'm not seeing.
The recent, it's the mission slide.
The mission, yeah, I know, it's the mission, and I'm not, something is covering from your end, but our mission is to stand against domestic violence, human trafficking by improving justice, strengthening the sovereignty of women, and providing awareness through counseling and education. We aim to prevent and end violence against women, children, and men around the world. So, that is the dream for House of Globalization. Our belief is that the best human relationships are characterized by mutual respect, open communication, and individual empowerment, partnership where there is dignity, respect, and compassion. Our aim is to support, inspire, and create a culture of nonviolence. Next slide, Jerry. What is domestic violence? Sometimes we are all confused on what this means. So, in, in a very short phrase here, domestic violence is a pattern of abuse behavior, including a well-range of physical, sexual, and psychological maltreatment used by one person in an intimate relationship against another to gain power unfairly or maintain that person's, that person's misuse of power, control, and authority. So, domestic violence could include violence between a husband and a wife, a girlfriend, a boyfriend, and it could be violence between parents as well and children, other children, elderly parents, or even siblings. So, it's a whole wide range. It's not just partner intimacy. It's not just husband and wife. Next slide, Jerry, because I know we're like kind of short of time. So, what is human trafficking? So, we know that Atlanta is a hub here, so we see a whole wide range of this in Atlanta area. So, we're working with so many other organizations that provide shelters for human trafficking victims and the survivors, also the courthouse. We just work with a lot of people around the metro Atlanta area and the whole of Georgia as a whole to make sure that we keep providing the services to those who need the services. So, human trafficking is defined as the recruitment of the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtain of a person for labor or service through the use of force, fraud, coercion, or coercion for the purpose of subjection to inherent, but sovereignty, I'm sorry, servitude, punage, debt, bondage, or slavery. So, either of those are all in this group of, in case a client comes to you and they are saying, "This person just is not abusing me, but they are forcing me to be in the home, and I can leave the house." Then you know there's an abuse that's occurring in this situation. Next slide, Terry. I couldn't put on this slide a lot of services that we provide, so I just, you know, highlighted the important ones that we provide. We provide a whole lot range of services here at the House of Globalization. So, it includes home and hospital visitation, because sometimes we do have our clients that are, maybe with gunshot wound or something, and they rush to the emergency room, and they have no body. We are that person that visits them and just go through that process with them. Assistance with housing and shelter. We do have permanent housing and transitional housing as well. Counseling, of course, is very needed. Utility rental assistance, and that's where sometimes we run out of funds, and then we're looking for partners that can assist us to, you know, to help our, our clients. Food, clothing, and hygiene products, transportation vouchers, assistance with temporary protection order, which is a TPO, to keep the abuse away from the client. In-house attorney, of course, we do have about six attorneys that are sisters, but the in-house is on, on the board, and she does family and immigration law as well, all pro bono. We also help with employment services for the client. Sometimes when they leave, they leave with nothing, so we try to make sure they're self-sufficient. We're helping them go through the process and to make sure they know that we're here to assist them through the process. They are not alone. So, next slide, Jerry. This is one of my very, very important portion of whenever I'm in contact with a client or a potential client. I always advise them to make sure they have a safety plan just in case, because sometimes you might be in that situation. You don't want to get in the way, your, your life is in danger, and you don't know what to do. You have a safety plan just so that you know that one day, this is what I want to do, because this environment doesn't suit me anymore. I have to plan to be safe, so I can leave this, you know, with, with my kids maybe, but we can go in a safe environment. But you need to make sure that you're memorizing your contact information, you're memorizing local 911 emergency calls or- emergency calls or our crisis line number as well, just in case it's happening at two AM in the morning. You have those numbers to call and we can assist you. Next slide, please. So um, under safety plan, um, all this, I just something that I just put real quick, um, like a plan and escape route. So that's what I'm talking about. Maybe you, if there's a route that your abuser knows that you take every day, you need to plan, you know, a safety plan, calling us and saying, this is happening, but I don't want to leave now. Can you tell me when it's right time for me to leave? Talk to an advocate and see how we can help. Having a suitcase ready to go, keep it in a hidden place, maybe your grandma's place, a church. Um, our organization, anywhere that you feel like it's safe for you. So your abuser doesn't know you have this plan. Um, have a code word or phrase to use with your children and make sure they understand that this code word is when there is danger. If there's danger, this is what I will say. If you hear me say this, this is what you should do. And if you don't know what those are, you can communicate with us. We'll have a safety plan booklet that we can send to you to um, to use. Also have a cell phone with you in case you have to call nine one one. Frequent um, crowd and you know, um, eliminated places, always risk, always ask for people to accompany you, like people you trust to accompany you. If you don't have that, call an advocate like us. We are trustworthy, of course, and we are on your side. So we will protect you with all costs. Um, change routes and places you used to go. If you know that your abuser know this is where you go to church, sometimes all the time. It's okay to change that area or change your um, your your church for the for the moment just because they might know exactly where to target you. So you want to change the little things um, for that moment until everything is calmed down. Um, change your computer passwords, email, access passwords, um, change locks on your door if you're sustaining the residence. Um, tell neighbors and friends and also advocates on what's happening, just in case something does happen. Someone or we can present to in court saying that yes, when this was happening, this this happened and um, we know about it and we we can use that. Um, next slide, looks at my time is up. Next slide, I'm almost done.
That's okay. That's okay. This is a topic.
Okay, I just um, what to take with you when escaping. This is very important. When we first um, the first contact with clients, we always advise them to, of course, proof of identity to make sure they are Georgia residents and all of that. But one of the most important thing why we do this is because we want to make sure that if something does happen and you leave that environment. Um, some abusers are very vindictive. They can burn up or destroy all your important documents. And if that happens, we have those as a backup. So we have a chart for every client that we see. And we have most of this um, items here in those charts. So let's say you don't have your birth certificate anymore. Guess what? We have that for you. So it's always good to have this prior to your escape plan. So um, talk to your advocates and see how they can help you secure all of this information. So that um, you don't have to start from scratch. That's really what the point is. And next slide, Jerry. So um, important as well is financial elements like cash, bank cards, um, debit cards and and so forth. So you also want to change those with your bank. If you are joined um, together, you might want to take your name off, retake what you can take as soon as possible. And make sure that all this happens prior to your escape plan. Um, cell phone charge is of course important and those are really, just in case it happens at a time where everybody's sleeping and you don't know where to go. You can charge at the gas station. You can, you know, make sure that you are accessible, someone can reach you. Um, or I have to go, anything you consider important, it's always good to take them away from that residence and keep it somewhere safe. Last slide, Jerry. Um, to contact us, we do have, like I stated, a crisis line. This crisis line is twenty-four seven. You can reach us at any time of the day. Or or um, holidays, it doesn't matter, anytime. And the main line, um, if let's say you're with an advocate and you don't know what to do and it's not an emergency, you can call the six, seven, eight, seven, one, two, eight, two, seven, one. That's the number that any of our advocates here will answer any of your calls or concern and see how to help your clients. We also have a fax at um, that you can fax us or email us as well at support at houseofglobalization.org or contact at houseofglobalization.org. That was a rush. I tried to rush through it, Jerry. Uh, I hope that you are able to pick something up from this presentation and I'm here. If you have any question at the end of the the presentation. Thank you Jerry for having me.
Well, no, that's great. And you're going to stay on so for questions and answers, but just to let folks know out there, you are now statewide. Originally, you were Metro Atlanta. And my understanding is you're now a statewide uh, agency uh, to help those people that are that are escaping uh, very unique, difficult situations. Uh, I know that in the past, you've come to us. We've we've had a cooperative relationship with between House of Globalization and St. Vincent de Paul. Um, I'd like to encourage our folks that, you know, trying to solve a domestic violence situation by yourself is not always the right thing to do. Since we're not always equipped and it's always good to to bring in and get assistance from a partner who's been there, done it, knows the root, knows what to advise the families and individuals that we're serving. So uh, Vivian, I thank you so much for the partnership that we have and the continued partnership that we will will grow over time.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you so much. Okay. So now let me turn it over to um, uh, Jennifer Maxwell, our new director of Vincentian Support Services. Talk about formation and events. Jennifer?
Thanks, Jerry. Um, thanks Vivian uh, for for everything you shared with us. It's uh, critical and valuable information. I know that our Vincentians will, you know, enjoy uh, having you as a resource and hopefully use you. Um, and I will encourage them to do that as well. Um, we're going to switch gears a little bit, um, switch over to formation. Um, and Vincentian Services news here in the office and what I'm going to share with you this morning. Uh, first, I want to thank uh, Mike and Denise and the board as well as Pat and um, the rest of the leadership here at St. Vincent de Paul for inviting me to attend the National Assembly in Baltimore. Um, one of the, I guess sessions, they call them sessions that I attended was on revitalization of conferences. And so that's what I chose to share here today. Um, I'm not going to read this slide to you necessarily. I'm definitely available to um, take questions or over email or after the session here. But I wanted to just um, highlight a few things that I felt like were maybe indicators that we could be on the lookout for. Um, if we have a concern about um, you know, our conferences as time goes on and we we meet in person again and are back out, um, you know, helping our neighbors in need in person. Uh, so one of the indicators was a waning membership. And the other one was a difficulty in succession planning. So if you do have any of these concerns um, that have been expressed by your members or even amongst your leadership, I would encourage you um, to to get a little bit more information. There's on the national website as well as, you know, here on the slide, I've alluded to a few uh, resources. Uh, but those are two indicators that that are definitely of concern if you if you notice the the trend in your conference. And then more importantly would be the ideas for revitalization. Um, and I've included here some quotes from the session that I attended. I felt like they did a really nice job of encapsulating. Uh, you know, the the tenants of revitalizations, beginning with, of course, spirituality and prayer. Um, that it is uh, our vocation as Vincentians. Um, and a return to uh, the essential elements of the Vincentian life, which would be spirituality, uh, fellowship and service. And then a focus on uh, the five, one second, I need to sort this over. Uh, the five Vincentian virtues of humility, gentleness, simplicity, selflessness and zeal. Um, and the prayer that Jerry shared when we began touched on all five of those points. And so as you kind of, you know, look down and scroll through these um, tenants of revitalization, you'll see uh, the one that I felt like was really powerful, uh, just sitting in the session was if we just lead, then we should expect others to just follow. Um, so I think that that, you know, lends itself to our role as leaders. Um, and the impact that we can have on our membership and our Vincentians and to lead by example, uh, because we do represent Christ. So I think I'm going to move on to the next slide. It's a reinforcement uh, from last town hall that Jerry uh, and Pat hosted. This is a repeat. Uh, for those of you that remember Amanda, she shared these resources here with you. These haven't changed, but I did want to remind you because I felt like they supported uh, the revitalization slide that I was sharing. Um, I do want to draw your attention over to the upcoming formation that we have here through Vincentian Services, uh, October eighth, we have a Vincentian spiritual retreat with Sister Mary Francis. Uh, she and the spirituality committee have put together a wonderful uh, day for us. Um, and Deacon Bill over at Mary Our Queen. So we're looking forward to hosting uh, all of you who would like to attend and are able to attend. That will be in person. Uh, the next one would be October eleventh through the thirteenth. That's going to be our next Ozenam orientation. Uh, it will be virtual. I think uh, the expectation and the hope is that we will eventually meet in person. So uh, beginning in November, we want to be able to offer some Vincentian University opportunities in person. But in the beginning of the fiscal year, we'll be doing uh, the first one virtual. Please sign up for that. Some more information will go out uh, in a registration link. Uh, and next for, and lastly actually for important upcoming formation is going to be the CMS Treasurer Training. I've gotten some emails from several conferences with new treasurers. And so this would be something you want to encourage your new treasurers to attend. It is the CMS function of treasurer. It's not necessarily the treasurer role as would be pertaining to Laura Cheryl's uh, wheelhouse, but this is actually how to be a treasurer in CMS and how to use uh, CMS to I guess account for your finances as well as your uh, your cases and check cutting and and so on. So that will also be virtual. And John Pepe will be the person who is going to assist us in that. So again, I welcome any questions you might have at the end and always available over over email. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so now we're going to turn it over to Pam Kramer, the conference president at St. Lawrence Conference in Lawrenceville. And this is our segment where we talk about some of the innovation and some of the, how would I say, collaboration that goes on with our conferences to help our families in need. So Pam, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Awesome. So.
Thank you, Jerry, for inviting me to share about uh, our twinning model for motel to home. We kind of called a mini motel to home program at St. Lawrence. We're in Lawrenceville, um, Georgia in Gwinnett County. Um, next slide, please. So I just wanted to give you a little background about St. Lawrence. Uh, we are a very vital uh, and diverse church with probably about four thousand um, families. And we have um, been established there in Gwinnett in nineteen sixty-three originally from a mission and then the new church in eighty-seven. And we we have, uh, like I said, very diverse population at our place with a lot of countries represented. And as far as the conference is concerned, it's also old forty, probably about forty years old. And we serve, uh, we have thirty-four member, active members with ten caseworkers right now. And we serve set four zip codes in the Lawrenceville and Daculla area. We get about a hundred and twenty-five calls to our helpline every month. Where we, our call line is twenty-four seven. And um, we get most of our funding from the collection. We have a second collection every month. And we also have applied for some uh, different grants that we've been able to get additional funds to help um, service the neighbors in our community. And we do have the Lawrenceville Thrift Store also from, so we get support from the thrift store, from the sales of the thrift store as well. This last summer, we were able to get another grant from the Friends of the Poor and of ten thousand dollars altogether, actually. And we were able to shelter uh, sixteen uh, homeless people in in extended stay hotels in one month. And we were able to do that because we were, we were able to get the funding from the Friends of the Poor. We do have partnership with the Lawrenceville Co-op. We do not have our own food kitchen. Uh, we made the decision not to to do that because we're about one block away from the co-op. And they uh, we're their partner with them and they actually distribute food three times a week to all the people in our Florenceville and Daculla zip codes. So they're our food partner. Just to give you a little background, last year, we served four hundred and sixty-three people with the total donations from church and grants of over two hundred thousand. And we actually paid out or assisted financially with uh, about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars into the community. And that's a picture of our church. Next slide, please. So I wanted to tell you about our probe, what we did and what we're so excited about. Really, God blessed us uh, to be able to help a family. And I was involved through the Motel to Home Program in two thousand and nineteen in Norcross that Denise Fisher and Heidi had started. And so we kind of modeled what we did um, on that. So we got a referral from Denise Fisher actually through family promise, which is a program uh, that we have in Gwinnett County that does help families that, but they were unable to help this particular family. So um, uh, they they referred it to our conference. And so we uh, picked up this family. And the the story I would tell you quickly is because I think it's, it just shows God's hand in everything that we do at St. Vincent de Paul. Um, we, it's a family of a a husband and a wife and five children. One of the children is an adult child. And the woman was pregnant and they uh, had a section eight voucher that they had gotten and moved up from out of state in April, thinking they were going to move into the house. Uh, they hadn't saved money. Both the husband and the adult daughter was working full-time. They saved money in their savings and they were expecting to move into the house in Lawrenceville. However, as you all probably know about section eight, it doesn't happen that way. And so um, they moved in April and end up staying in hotels and spending all of their savings and then they were on the street. So when we picked them up, they were living in their car. They'd also had been living in a tent in the park and with all seven of these people and with her being pregnant. So uh, we were able to put them in an extended stay hotel for a week, which costs a lot of money, as you all know, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars to be exact. And we knew that we could not keep supporting them until they got into their house. So I sent in an email to our district uh, president, whose name is Leo Payne, and he then sent it out to all of the the conferences in our uh, district, which is, there's nine of them. And immediately on the same day that we sent it out, five of the conferences said yes, they would twin with us. So I was able to get thirty-seven hundred dollars basically from the conferences in addition to the monies that we could put forth. And we were able to keep the family in the hotel for four weeks. And the day we were going to have to pay one more week, the house was finally approved from the remodeling and inspections. And on, so on July twenty-ninth, at that night, they moved into the hotel, I mean, into the house in uh, Lawrenceville. And um, so we were able to get the people off the street and maintain them. And we were able to also had money left over from twinning to pay the deposit for them to get into the house. And also uh, we then partnered with a lot of other people, including the council. The council support center actually was able to, there was a fortunately a um, a furniture store that actually had closed and they donated all this new furniture to the council and we were able to have a wish list. And we were able to get bedroom furniture for five bedrooms. And we also were able to reach out to uh, in our community, the Lawrenceville Co-op, also our Respect Life Committee, which is um, very active in our parish. And between all of these different sources coming together, we were able to basically furnish a five-bedroom house in two weeks. In addition to baby thing, we got two baby beds, four other, you know, everything you can think of, kitchen appliances, patio furniture, a grill, a smoker, because everybody came together to help this family. And the, I'm happy to say that the family is now settled in. Her husband got a new job that's full-time and uh, secure, that's right there in Lawrenceville. The adult daughter is still working full-time at the Olive Garden and they're going to be able to survive and thrive in the community. And this is all because that we all, you know, with with, you know, the, with God really being at the forefront. Us all praying the whole time. We wanted her to be in the house before she had her baby uh, in the hotel room. And she did have the baby on September the third. And now their family with six children living in Lawrenceville. And all because that we were able to start with twinning and then start and then drawing the whole community together to to put these, this family into a secure environment. So uh, next slide, and these are all our churches. So Mary Our Queen, Prince of Peace, Saint Stephen the Martyr, Saint John Newman, and then the next page has Saint Oliver Plunkett. And then the next page has St. Oliver Plunkett. I couldn't fit all those pictures on one slide and, and they were, those were our twinning partners. And so what we learned for this, which I thought was very exciting is that this really provided us with a local model to help the neighbors in our community. And we, if, if in the future, in our District Nine, which is mostly Gwinnett County, if we can identify other potential families that have the ability to be long-term supported and then stabilized, then we can use the same model for the other, any of the other churches. If St. Marguerite has a family that fits this model, then we can, the rest of us can twin and we can make this happen again. So we learned that through this model and we, we also learned that the best way to be able to do all of this is to always start with prayer, as, as St. Vincent de Paul has told us. And blessed Osmond, and also reach out to other ministries within your own community and in your, and, and also outside of even your church community. So that's, that was my last slide. So thank you.
Pam, that was wonderful. It's a wonderful story about all the conferences in District Three and coming together and Leo bringing everybody together as the district president again. It just shows the power when we look on the bounds of our conference.
I, it's not my last slide. Please, the next slide. I'm sorry. I wanted to have one more slide. There's the family. So there's a picture of the brand new baby that's now like 10 days old and the mom and the dad, and they were all out someplace as before their baby was born and that that's the house up in the corner. So, and the both of the children that are school age up, there's a 15-year-old, a six-year-old, a three-year-old, a one-year-old, the baby, the, or the ones that are in school are in school in Lawrenceville and they, they like, they're settled in and they like it. The boys, high school is going out for football and the little girl in the first grade is so excited to she, when I came to visit them, she wanted me to come look at her room because we'd gotten her a bed. And she was so thrilled to death and she also was, they're such generous and thankful people. And the little girl wanted me to have a piece of her Play-Doh because she said, I want you to have it. That's, you know, she had nothing, but she had Play-Doh, so she shared it with me and she wanted me to have her stuffed animal. And I said, oh no, you keep the stuffed animal. So she gave me a picture she drew at, at school that I could have. And so I said, I'll hang it on my refrigerator where I put all my other artwork. So just really, really a pleasant family and very thankful. And the mother is already planning Arts and Craft Day to write thank you notes, to have all the kids help write thank you notes to all the people that helped them get where they are today. So. The end.
The end. Awesome, Pam. So again, like I said, it's great how all the conferences came together and you're right, it's a true model for how you look past your own conference. You know, you do pray, you do reach out. And thanks to District Three and Leo and the rest of the conferences, you're able to help this, this family. So that's awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, so onto the last topic and I'm going to cover a, a survey that we recently put out. And again, I've been getting a lot of questions from conferences saying, okay, how, how are other conferences doing? Are they, are they meeting in person? Are they meeting with our neighbors in need? How are they meeting? Are they getting out there and doing home visits? And, and let me explain that, you know, we encourage it. We don't, you know, how would I say, force it? It's up to the conferences what they feel most comfortable with. But we know that when COVID hit, there was a big pullback for obvious reasons of meeting face to face with those families that are asking for assistance. So a year ago, we did a pulse of what was going on with the conferences. And then we just did after 12 months, another pulse. And I'm happy to report that number one, thank all the conferences that responded. We had a very, very robust response rate. So thank you very much for, for filling out the survey and sending it back. But it's, it's very encouraging to see that from a in-person conference meeting, Vincentians meeting Vincentians, that it is, we're up over 80% of conferences that are actually meeting together, talking about, you know, the work that you do, praying together, trying to grow spiritually. Very, very encouraging. And I think there's more and more conferences that are coming on board. So it's, it's so good to see that. And then from an in-person casework, and when we define in-person casework, it's, I know that a lot of conferences innovated by setting up shop at the parish because the parish gave them large spaces for them to meet with our families or meeting in public places or outside, but you know, not inside. And it also includes, you know, coming into people's homes. But that has grown from 27% to 62% of now we're meeting person to person with those people that are looking for our help, our assistance and support and a vision of hope. And the other thing that is also in my mind amazing is now they are going back to home visits. And so a year ago was under 6% of the conferences were actually conducting home visits. Now it's more like 35 plus percent of the conferences. And I know that in some of the questions we asked is, do you plan on moving there in the future? And the answer is yes. I think people are starting to feel a little bit more comfortable. And again, we're not, we're not dictating. It's, it's up to the conferences how they do that. And then also it just, this is a little bit of an anomaly, but from an in-person food pantry standpoint, you were always meeting with individuals, whether it was delivering food or they were coming to pick up. I think more of the pantries that are shop throughs are going back to doing shop throughs and, and engaging with the families that are coming that have food, food needs. We did ask you for some comments and, and that was, okay, so how could, how could the CSC help? And you know, many of you said, hey, look, we're good, you know, we know what we're doing, which is obvious, you know, but, but there were many that also said, you know, we need to figure out a way to get some better training on home visits. We need to get caseworkers on boarded. We had a little bit of a gap because a lot of the way that we taught, taught our new Vincentians how to do a home visit was on the job training. And if we weren't out there performing the home visits, it was hard to do that. So there was a, a sub request for that. So to that end, I just want to kind of cover, you know, what are we trying to do? And that is, you know, again, Jennifer pointed it out in her slides. We, you know, we've put a lot of time and effort into helping our conferences with recruitment materials, with recruitment strategies. We will continue to provide you with materials. We, you know, come to our website, take a look at what we have to offer. I know that many of the conferences have come to us asking us to help us design recruitment pamphlets and we're happy to do that. And, and many of them have started to become very successful. I get a lot of calls from conferences after they've done that and said, guess what? We've got 20 people that have signed up. We did a welcome session and we got 15 that showed up to the welcome session. And I believe we're probably going to get about 10 new Vincentians. And so kudos to you guys that are starting to do that as well as doing it with the support and the assistance of the parish, because many of the parishes are starting to open up with ministry fairs. And then the last one is, is the, the whole area of social media. We're going to work on social media, try to get it out there to encourage people to become Vincentians, to become volunteer caseworkers or any other type of role. And so we'll, we'll continue to do that, working with our marketing communications companies that we work with. And then on, on the right side of the chart, the other thing is, is that National has come out with some new materials around home visit training. I know we do it with Ozenam training. We devote one day to home visit. This is a little bit more in-depth. We are going to schedule an in-person home visit workshop in the fourth calendar, fourth quarter of this year and invite people to the CSC to be here in person to see if, if that could help. The other is, you know, in the area of caseworker CMS training, working in that, because we know that that also helps people get on boarded. And the other is, we're starting to put together some caseworker support community, some experts that could help support those people that are new. And then lastly, I just want to offer this up is that, you know, we have our family support center in Shambly. We're starting to increase the amount of visits we do here. And we'd like to offer it up if anybody would like to come and volunteer and learn casework, we'd be happy to take you through it. We, we're going to be open, you know, five, maybe six days a week. And so we can easily schedule you in. You can get, you know, how would I say, your sea legs under you by working with us at the family support center and then go back to your conference with some, some groundwork there, some foundation of knowledge that then you can catapult into becoming a primary caseworker. So, so those are the types of things that we're thinking about doing. Obviously, we're always open to suggestions, what you need. That's why we're here at the conference support center, is to support the conferences, to support our Vincentians. So. With that, I'm just going to open it up now to Q and A. The good news is we, we still have a good, almost 25 minutes. So I don't know, Jennifer, have you seen any questions in the chat room?
I'm actually answering one now. There were some questions coming in, the difference between in-person casework and home visits. I was answering that. I don't know if you want me to elaborate here, but.
Well, might as well, might as well share it with everybody that's on. Let me stop sharing and let's just open it up, right?
Okay. So. The question is, what is the difference between in-person casework and home visits? The in-person casework, it could be done at a parish, like Jerry mentioned. There are some conferences who host days of the week where our neighbors in need show up to, to get assistance or even a food pantry. Whereas the home visit's a little bit more in-depth when we're going into someone's home. We're able to assess the need kind of firsthand and ideally in pairs. So there may be a situation where you notice something and, and the person who's with you, the Vincentian with you notices something else. And sometimes I, people in crisis are unable to really and truly identify what their primary needs are. And so where they may feel as though their electric bill is the most important, you know, if they're going to be evicted tomorrow, maybe housing is the most important thing. And so those home visits are an opportunity to see that need firsthand. Another question, Jerry, where do we get the recruitment brochures? And I was just in the process of answering that. Those, those are created here at the conference support center. Nisha is the staff member who creates those and customizes those for conferences. So if you do have any need for what we call collateral material, which would be a recruitment or conference reporting, sometimes it's nice to have for ministry fairs, to have a poster or a brochure for Vincentians or people who are discerning the call to be a Vincentian, to have, you know, something to demonstrate what your conference does and the impact that you have in your community. So that, that material is available. You're welcome to email me or Jerry or Nisha if you have her information and we'll make sure it's forwarded to her.
And I believe, Jennifer, if you go to the website, there's examples of the pamphlets of the brochures that we create. So if you just go to the website that we identified and we'll send it, we'll send these charts out. But if you look and you go to that, that website about recruitment on our member website, which we encourage you to, you will see examples of it. And then we can easily customize it for your particular conference.
That's right. Okay, Jer, here's another question. Has the council received an email from the Atlanta Community Food Bank about the GNAP program potentially being terminated at the end of September 2022 by the Georgia Department of Human Services?
We have, as far as I know, because we do have a lot of communications amongst our executive staff, this is something that would have been sent to Daryl Hooker. I do not know of any notification that they've, they've canceled it. If you guys, if some of your pantries out there have gotten it, please send it to us. I know that at our Shambly Food Pantry, I mean, obviously we have a very strong relationship with the Atlanta Community Food Bank. I don't know how much we use of the, of the GNAP program for food as opposed to other food that we use, so.
Okay, Vivian, we have a question for you coming in from Mike. Question for House of Globalization, what is the best way to refer a neighbor in need to your services? Just give them the phone number and website and address, or do you have a, a more preferred method?
And you gotta come up here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. They can also call the 678 number, the 678-712-8271. And we can take over from there, but you can also go on the website and we have a contact us tab where you can just write a small detailed message and it will come through to us and we can contact the client as well. So whatever's easiest for that advocate, they can just contact us directly as well.
Thank you, Vivian. Jerry, we have another.
I know that, I know a lot of conferences create their own community resource list. And so I would hope you would take that and you would put it on your community resource list, so.
Um, here's a follow-up question, Vivian. If, if there, if we have Vincentians that are actually meeting with someone in crisis in that specific moment, is it best to call 911?
Depending on what the situation is, you can call 911, but 911 will intend call us as well. So you just, you know, depending on what situation and what area of town that is, you can call our crisis line. We do have a crisis line as well on there and that is just like when 911, so whichever one you, they want to do. Let's say if there's a, a violence involved, like a gun or something on, on scene, then even when you call us, we will still call 911 because we'll need a police escort to go to the, to the residents. So. We just use our initiative to decide on what to do at that particular moment. So nothing is, is wrong. If you call us first, that's fine. If you call 911 first, that's also fine. So either way, we will be involved in that situation if it's domestic violence, not particularly House of Globalization, but I'm saying that an agency will be involved as well, so.
Thank you. Jerry, here's a question from Karen. Are there grants that we can apply for? We have a small conference and could possibly apply. She's from Fort Oglethorpe, one of our neighbors far north.
I mean, I'd have to take a look at your particular area and see what's possible. I know that we highlighted, for instance, Christ the Redeemer a couple town halls ago that, that basically went to local areas, went to local associations. You know, you could also look to see if there's a foundation up in your area. We can look to see, to apply. There's, sometimes there are local EMCs, they provide. I know if there's a Walmart, Walmart usually has a, has a, an allowance of $5,000 to $10,000 that they will provide in the way of grant money. So, you know, be happy, Laura, be happy to sit down and talk with you, take a look specifically about Fort Oglethorpe and that particular, you know, northwest area of Georgia to see what's possible, so.
And then clarification, Jerry, on the difference between GNAP and SNAP?
Well, SNAP is, is, what is it? Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program. That is a D, that's a DFAX program where, you know, SNAP is for food stamps. SNAP is, you're getting people food stamps or electronic benefits to go buy at a local store. Now GNAP is, we actually get the food. And again, this is from my limited knowledge. GNAP, we actually get the food, that we distribute that food through our food pantries. So there might be some gray areas there, but from my perspective, that's the differentiation. Does that help? from my perspective, that's the differentiation. Does that help?
We'll see.
By the way, again, I wanna advertise, we can help your family supply for SNAP benefits. So I hope as you visit with every family, you ask them if they have SNAP or if they're getting food stamps. And if they're not, you know, we have Chris McLean, who is coordinating for us. She's doing a fantastic job. And uh we again, go to our member website. We have a SNAP referral form. You know, just send it over to us. We'll take it from there and we'll help and see if there's a possibility that we can get some SNAP slash food stamp benefits for for your families.
All right, the last comment.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Can I interrupt just to come back to Karen's question on the grant funding, just to remind everybody that that there are funds available to council. Uh council twinning funds um for conferences in need of funding and just work through your district presidents. Uh they can sometimes, as um Pam alluded to in in her example, they can sometimes find twinning within the district. But uh if there's not funds available within the district, we do have a fund that we've established at the council for conferences. So I wanna make sure everybody's aware of that.
Thanks, Mike. This is a a compliment and a question. Pam, great presentation. Vivian, is your information? And are your slides available on your website? I would guess your information's on your website, but that is the deck that you presented with also available?
Sorry, Jerry has the slide. And I can forward that slide to anybody. I think I already had Vicki's um email address and I'll forward that to Vicki as well.
Yeah. But what we do, uh what we also do is we we actually post this be, we will post this town hall meeting and the 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 slides to our member website for your access.
And our website address is on there too, so you can get more information on the website that on the slide.
Thank you. You're Jerry, you're also recording this session.
Right.
I think, yeah.
We're posting a recording of the session.
That looks like it for uh the chat. I'm, if anybody else has any other questions, I'm happy to share them for the good of the group. I'm not seeing anymore, Jerry.
I just wanted, oh, it's I just wanna make one comment about the grants because we've been very fortunate with that. And one of them that's very easy seems to get, at least in Gwinnett, is from the Jackson EMC, which is the power company because they have that roundup program within the, and so they give a lot of grant money to local, you know, charities in the community. And it's pretty si- it's pretty easy for us to get those those grant monies. So I just thought I'd mention that wherever you are, Oglethorpe, I don't know, you know, whatever your you know, companies are, but that's been our way to get some monies.
Yeah, no, good point, Pam. There are a lot of conferences that take advantage of EMC grants locally. It's great. So I think with that, I guess we'll um we'll conclude the session. Let me just go back because obviously we want to finish up. We started with a prayer. Let me see if I, you know, see, is this it? Take it a shot here. All right. And let's finish up with a prayer. So Jesus is ever-present with God and ever-present with us, and so we pray. Lord, to whom shall we go? You have the words of eternal life. We ask for strength to continue as your faithful disciples. And may we always let your word break into our consciousness and change us. Amen. Thank you again. This concludes our session for the for the quarterly town hall. We'll see you next quarter. But in the meantime, you know where we are and we're always available to answer questions and help. Um so don't be bashful. God bless and have a great day.
Bye, Jennifer. Thank you, Jerry. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks to all our speakers. You guys did a wonderful job.
Thanks.